Next item on the agenda, public comment. This item is for either general public comment or for public comment on an action item, though you will have opportunities on each action item also to make public comment. Please, if commenting on an action item, please place the agenda item number on the request to speak form and fill out a form. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment at this time?
We didn't do roll.
Back to item two on the agenda, roll call.
Kevin Wysocki.
Here.
Doug Kaufman.
Here.
Paulo Levis.
Here.
Charles Reno.
Here.
Kathleen Taylor.
Here.
Jason Woosley.
Here.
Dany Stapleton.
Here.
Okay, thanks, sorry for trying to rush us. Back to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
No, we don't.
Okay. On to the next item, four, approval of the minutes of the August 6, 2014 regular meeting.
Commissioner Kaufman, I move to approve.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wysocki, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, item five, city council liaison reports. Who is our city council liaison?
Our city council liaison, sorry, Claudia Hansen, planning and housing manager. Our liaison is Dwight Dorch, Keltman Dorch. So we will be getting a new liaison in end of, probably December. And I have no reports from this time.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public hearings. Any person who has chosen to provide his or her public comment when a public hearing is heard will need to so indicate on the request to speak form provided to the secretary. Alternatively, you may provide your comment when item three, public comment, is heard at the beginning of this meeting and also at the end of the meeting. First public hearing, LDC 15-00001, Bella Vista Ranch PUD amendment.
Once again, Claudia Hansen, planning and housing manager. This is a request for an amendment to the existing Bella Vista Ranch PUD, essentially to relocate the school site, and the applicant will get into that further. But this is an existing PUD, but by moving, by making a change like this, it does open up the whole handbook again for review. We have analyzed that. The only changes that we felt necessary are identified in the staff report. The findings regarding PUD amendments are located or begin on page six of your staff report. And that is what you're looking at tonight, and then I would have the applicant go into further detail about his request.
Great, thank you. Welcome, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. For the record, my name's Randy Walter. I'm with Places Consulting. I'm here representing Corona Cyan LLC on their application for the PUD amendment.
Randy, can you speak in the mic, please?
Do I need to speak in the?
Yeah.
I don't want to get too close, because then I sound like I'm yelling at you, which I don't want to do. Okay, I'll try. Does this work okay for everybody?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay. This is a fairly simple, straightforward application. As Claudia mentioned, it's really involved relocating an existing elementary school site. The original PUD had the elementary school site in this location. At the original PUD, it was a 10-acre site. When the dedication agreement was actually approved by the school district, it actually ended up being an 8-acre site. So that's one of the other little minor changes. The site's being relocated from here to this location. That's the basic change that you're looking at for the amendment. There's a couple of major reasons why we're doing this. The first reason is one that was identified originally in the PUD. The location of that existing school site is technology. Is very close to the existing elementary school site that's in Double Diamond. This is South Meadows. Existing school sites right in this location is actually almost less than a mile from those two locations. School district never really appreciated that particular location, so we looked at the possibility of moving it a number of different locations. This is the location we ended up with. Just to give you an idea geographically, it's about 1.4 miles now from existing Double Diamond. The Downer Springs Elementary Site, it's about 1.7 miles. And from the proposed Damani Ranch Site, it's approximately 1.7 miles. So it's reasonably geographically located in a spot that will work well for the school district. The second reason we're looking at relocating it is a timing issue. As it stands right now, the school district has no plans to build this elementary school site. It's not in their 10-year plan. It's not in their current financing. They have no financing available to build it. The next site that they build will be the Damani Ranch Site, and they're working on that one now. So we're looking at somewhere down the road. Currently, within Cyan or the Bella Vista PUD, we're building in both villages A and B, and at this point, most of the facilities are already constructed. And we'd like to take advantage of the infrastructure that's already in place to build this site with housing as most of Village A is completed and most of Village B is completed. So it'll give us an opportunity to utilize that existing infrastructure that's already there to build some additional housing. This will give the school district some more time, because we'll be able to renegotiate the dedication agreement and give them some additional time to build this other school in anticipation of both Village C and D developing later on. We're looking at completion of somewhere in the 2020, 2021 range to develop out all of Village C and D as well as A and B. So that's kind of where we stand today. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Walter.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll take public comment? Oh, I'm sorry. Staff is now. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, for the record, Bill Goss, senior civil engineer. Randy pretty much touched on the PUD amendment. Primarily, it's to move the school site. We did receive a letter from the school district in support of the change of the site. And then in the PUD, we also adjusted the acreages for Villages B and C to accommodate those changes. As well, there was some language clarification for the six-acre public facility site that if it is not developed by the city as a public facility site, that any future development of that will be according to the standards for Village B, since it's adjacent to Village B right now. With that, I will be available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Actually, at this time, we'll do disclosures.
I have a disclosure.
Okay, go ahead.
And that is, I do live close to the Damani Ranch area. I have no children that will go to these schools, so there's no issue with me as far as that. But I would like to disclose that.
Thank you.
And I have received emails.
Commissioner Reno, I visited the site.
Commissioner Levis, I visited the site and received email.
Commissioner Wysocki, I received email and visited the site.
Commissioner Taylor, as did I.
Commissioner Woosley, as did I.
Commissioner Stapleton, I did as well. So we will now open it up for public comment on this item. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this item, make a public comment? If you wish to make a public comment, please come up to the podium, state your name for the record, and then make sure to fill out a request to speak form here with Michelle when you're finished.
After. Yeah, my name's Pat Nor. I live in the Damani Ranch area. So I guess the site is just solely moving to sell more houses in that, in the current sites? Is that, I guess that's what I want to know? As opposed to for, I guess it's in a central location right now, right off the main road. I'm just curious, moving it back, pushing it away, is there a reason other than monetary reasons for the developers that it's moving?
We can't answer questions during public comments, so if you want to put everything that you can on the record, and then perhaps we can address it afterwards.
Okay, I guess I'll do that then.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Okay, then, we'll bring it back to the commission for questions.
For the applicant, this is Commissioner Kaufman. I know you went over that, but again, you're moving the school based upon Washoe County School District kind of request?
Yes, Commissioner, it's a mutual occurrence from a practical standpoint. The school district always thought that they'd need to move the school further to the east than where it was on the original plan. We knew that, but that's kind of the way the plan got approved originally. We had the opportunity now to get an opportunity to move it. From a timing standpoint, at the time the original PUD was done, we didn't know when the school was going to get built. It's been pushed off many years since the original assumption that where it was going to be built. So we took this opportunity to move it. It's a joint request, basically, between the school district and the developer. And it is to help the geographic location of that school. The other component that has changed over time is we've moved the school as far away from Veterans Parkway as we can. We've moved it from South Meadows as much as we can. We're trying to keep it in a position where it has minimal traffic impact on our major arterial system, which is something that's part of the new regional plan, which was not part of the plan when we did it originally. So there's other factors associated with the move.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant or for staff?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Commissioner Wysocki, a question for staff, either for Bill or possibly Claudia. And I apologize, because I meant to go back and highlight the sentence that I saw, but the PUD says that the buildings and the build-out will be done in accordance with the IBC 2012. That's the current code that we're working from, but if their total build-out plan isn't until 2021, there's a chance that we will have a new code in place to build by. Should that be left more vague as to say the current code or a code applicable at the time?
It actually, it's on Claudia Hansen, planning and housing manager, page four under public safety. Is that what you're looking at?
Yes, there it is.
International Fire Code? Is that the one you're looking at?
Well, yeah, International Fire Code.
And that says as amended. So that would be any current version of it.
Okay.
That's why we put the as amended in there.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Commissioner Woosley?
This is questions for staff or the applicant, whoever's best to answer this. Right now, one of the reasons why we're taking advantage of current infrastructure to build more houses, does that mean a greater cost in the future to build a school if we don't have infrastructure reaching out to that new location?
Again, Randy Walter, Places Consulting. There will be infrastructure built with Village C and D, just like there has been with Village A and B. It's just not currently there. It's currently in the plan to be done. The idea was to get the timing to work better, because right now, all the infrastructure's in place in A and B. We'd like to take advantage of that. It's not currently in C and D, because the school district isn't planning on building a school at this point. They don't need the infrastructure. We're modifying the agreement in such a way that there's a mutual understanding in terms of infrastructure. The developer's responsible to provide the infrastructure to the school site. There's a share occurrence of the streets adjacent to the school site, where the school site pays for half of it and the developer pays the other half. But all the other infrastructure has to be basically provided by the developer himself. So the school site will ultimately have infrastructure. Hopefully, at the time that the school district is ready to build, the infrastructure and the building will occur at the same time. That's what we're trying to get to.
And even if the school district's ready before you are, then infrastructure will then go in?
Correct. There'll be an agreement within the existing agreement that makes sure that the infrastructure is there in the event that they do end up building before the developer does. So the developer will provide that infrastructure to the school.
Thank you for the answers.
Sure.
Any other questions? Any discussion on this item or motion?
Jonathan, three motions on this.
Yeah, if you would, if you could break it up into the...
Based upon compliance, in case of LDC 15-00001, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend the city council approve the amendment to the development standards subject to condition A as written below for, number one, relocate the eight-acre elementary school site from the south-central portion of the site in Village A to the northeast portion of the site in Village C. And I can make all the findings.
Commissioner Wysocki? I'll second that motion, and I can make all the findings.
Any discussion before we take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Next motion?
LDC 15-0001, based upon compliance with applicable findings, I move to recommend the city council approve the amendment to the development design standards subject to condition A as written below for increase in the acreage of Village B by 10.6 acres from 34.6 acres to 45.2 acres. And I can make all the findings.
There a second on the motion?
Commissioner Wysocki, I'll second that motion, and I can make all the findings.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Third motion?
In the case of LDC 15-0001, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend the city council approve the amendment to the development design standards subject to condition A as written below. Reduce the acreage of Village C to eight acres, by eight acres, from 59.9 acres to 51.9 acres. And I can make all the findings.
There a second?
Commissioner Reno, I second it. I can make the findings.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. Good luck with your project. Next item on the agenda, item number seven, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report, including reconsideration of the recommendation to city council for the planning commissioner appointment to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission.
If I could jump in there real...
I will defer to Ms. Hansen.
And I will send it back to you when we're done discussing the reconsideration of the appointment. At the last meeting, I believe it was, we had, oh no, it was two meetings ago, sorry, we had it on there to appoint a new member to Regional Planning Commission, because we had been informed that Commissioner Woosley was termed out. That was incorrect. He was not termed out. So we would recommend or request that you reconsider your recommendation to city council for appointment to the Regional Planning Commission.
Commissioner Wysocki?
Okay, so therefore, we don't need any nominations for Regional Planning Commissioner, correct?
You do, because it's an annual reappointment, but it's, his term is still active.
Okay.
Okay, then.
So we could then reappoint Commissioner Woosley for one more year?
Yes.
Do we need a nomination and then a motion?
Yes, please. And it would be a recommendation to city council for reappointment.
Okay, do it. Would anyone like to nominate someone for the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission? I would. Can I make a nomination?
No, you cannot.
Oh, okay.
Point of order.
Never mind. Go ahead, then.
Commissioner Wysocki, I will nominate Commissioner Woosley back for one more year at his position of Regional Planning Commissioner.
Do we second a nomination?
Commissioner Kaufman, I'll second that.
Okay, do we vote on a nomination?
Yes. This is for the recommendation to city council.
Okay, do we have any other nominations? Okay, all in favor of nominating Jason Woosley to Regional Planning Commission?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that would be a recommendation to city council?
Yes.
Well, and then now we have to make a motion to recommend that city council appoint him, right?
That was my motion.
No, you just, that was actually just a motion.
I was just clarifying that that's what the motion was.
That's why I asked if we needed to take a vote on the nomination, and then if there's a second vote on...
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
All right. I thought you meant a first and a second, sorry.
Okay, all right. So we're good. Congratulations, Jason. Commissioner Woosley, thank you very much for your service on Regional Planning Commission.
And I'll let you know when that gets on the city council agenda.
Thank you very much for the reappointment.
Any other updates from regional?
Yes, our meeting was scheduled for next Wednesday, the 10th. It has been postponed until the 24th of September. So Regional Planning Commission is now scheduled for 6:00 PM on September 24th. And I understand that we do have a new member of the regional planning staff, formerly the city of Reno. I don't know how Claudia let that go by, but I'm putting the blame on Claudia. So being that we will have a new member of staff, if she is presenting anything, commissioners, we should have questions for her to help break her in and get her flowing with Regional Planning Commission.
I'm sure she's anticipating questions from you, Commissioner.
I'm sure she is. Thank you, that's my update.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item eight, discussion of possible action regarding the definition of public facilities and public services in Title 18.
And I put, Commissioner Reno asked this to go on the agenda, so I'll let him start off with it, but I put together some sections of code where public facility is discussed in findings and in RMC and in NRS. There is no specific definition for public facilities and public services, but it is referenced throughout both documents, and that memo is in front of you discussing those. Right, identifying those.
Okay. Well, yeah, the reason I asked this question is because in some of the projects, I wonder if public facilities is more or less what it's describing here as, including public access, sidewalks for pedestrians and facilities and services for bicycles, and not necessarily for schools and other things. Almost as if it's a public amenity to that site or that facilities for that site. And so a good definition to really understand is why I asked. I mean, what is the definition of public facility? And so you're going to be amending the Title 18, so you'll come up with a definition?
That we will review definitions when we review Title 18. The way it stands now, if you look at the references throughout RMC and NRS, schools, police protection, parks and recreation, all of those are considered public facilities or public services, depending on what document you're looking at.
And we should consider them every time we go through any item?
It would be staff's understanding that if you're referencing schools, then schools would be part of public facilities, yes.
And I think we had the discussion last time where there's horizons to where they have time to implement the public facilities. So I think Commissioner Wysocki had some good comments on that, where yes, we could approve it with the understanding that they have the capacity or the ability within the near future to accommodate that public facility.
I think you'd have to look at that on a case-by-case basis, and whatever the situation is with the school district at that time.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Kaufman, the only thing on a base, you know, when you're talking about a zone map amendment, you know, how long, Claudia, from the time that passes to the time somebody starts the building process, does that usually take?
That's too open-ended of a question. It could be 10 days, it could be 10 years, or more.
Well, okay. All right. I mean, I just disagree that we have to look at the school district who comes before us and says, you know, hey, McQueen's overcrowded, and we're going to let them dictate to us what the growth of the city is. I mean, they have ability to change, you know, boundaries, starting times of schools, everything, so...
And I'm sorry, that's not what I said, I don't think, in that you would have to, that they would be dictating the timeline. There is a finding that the discussion was regarding public facilities and whether schools, I think it started out, were schools a public facility? I would say by references in NRS and RMC that, yes, schools are a public facility and need to be considered. The finding is to develop a timely, orderly, and efficient...
It says, I'm sorry, I made the wrong one. Ability and accessibility of public services such as schools in NRS 278-349. I mean, that's a broad, you know, it's a broad statement. And we seem to have gotten tied up between, you know, can they make the changes or are they there today?
And I would say that was, that would be why we have seven planning commissioners, is to look at that finding and to look at whatever the proposed development is, and can you make the finding is that there's availability and accessibility to public services such as schools. You may be able to, you all may be able to make the finding or not make the finding in a certain area. And you may consider redistricting, or changing start times, or busing, or whatever it might be. You may feel that that is appropriate, others may not. So you need to make that finding for yourself. And if Jonathan wants to jump in at all, you may.
Yeah, I would...
They're loud. The new ones.
Yeah, I would agree with that comment, with Claudia's comment. I mean, I think it's incumbent upon the commission, knowing everything that you know, knowing the case in front of you, and knowing how the school potentially works, that'll be the essence of your discussion and your analysis. And so if the belief is, well, this project's coming online, you know, in 10 years practically, and we believe that in that time, there will be redistricting, there will be, you know, steps taken by the school district, you can make that finding. If it's a different case with a different set of facts, maybe you can't make that finding.
Commissioner Wysocki?
Thank you. To take what Jonathan just said and what Doug just said, and a project that we heard 10 minutes ago, where there is a build-out that's proposed through the 21, 2021 plan, that's several years down the road for full build-out, I could see the school district having time to make available public services that may not be available today by 2021 at full build-out. But if the applicant before us tonight said it would be a full build-out by the end of the 2014, 2015 school year, and then starting in September of 2015, had to, the school district had to make room for 200 or 300 new kids, that couldn't be done in nine months or 12 months. And so, excuse me, I see, to take what Claudia is saying, that's where we as commissioners have to take into consideration all of the things that are before us and the questions to ask of, when is the full build-out expected? What is the future plan? How much time do we have to look at? How much time does a school district have to look at? Or Tomwa, or whomever it is, to provide those services? Thank you.
Commissioner Kaufman, the only thing is, on his own, on his own plan, we normally don't see a total project or get that information. And the other thing I would point out, and I'm just going to use McQueen High School as an example, it's been overcrowded for many, many years. What makes us think that that's going to change? You know, I mean, the school district hasn't taken action on it, so it's almost like when they come before us, again, you know, that's one of the things that they're dictating is where the growth of the city's going to go.
Commissioner Wysocki, and that may be exactly why one of us doesn't, or two of us, or four or five of us don't make the finding, and when we don't make the finding... or four or five of us don't make the finding, and when we don't make the findings, we state which findings we can't make, so it's part of the public record. Sorry, Jay.
Mr. Wieski?
Commissioner Wieski, for the record, during this discussion, it's not right for us to, we're not going to condition the school district to either add trailers or redistrict before this project goes through, so. But at the same time, are we supposed to have just good faith that we assume that the school district will take care of this? And we don't know what the right answer is, is the right answer to add a trailer or to redistrict. And this is taking the assumption that if we're a build-out, that's only a year or two down the road, that they can't, you know, it's kind of immediate planning. As commissioners, how are we supposed to consider that and trying to do what's best for the community and for infrastructure? If this is a finding, I think this is a good discussion.
Commissioner Reno?
With that, you know, and we saw it in the West Meadows Estate, where they came to us one, in one semitile, and there was capacity numbers, and they came another time, and the capacity numbers have changed. Well, this is a thing that's going to constantly be changing. They pulled the program, I think the GT program, from the Verdi Elementary, which completely changed that, how that school was, how much capacity it needed. And so, I think that's, and Commissioner Wieski's point, I mean, we cannot dictate to the school how to do it. But, and I agree with Commissioner Wieski about, it's timing. I think it all comes down to timing. You know, when, when will this project be implemented, and can we make the finding that there's available capacity, or that things can happen within that timeframe when that project happens? So, I think that, I mean, I probably helped start this firestorm a little bit, because I got a little upset at the school, because it's like, you're telling us we can't, you know, we're at capacity. And they're coming before us every time, and every project, they're going to say we're overcapacity, overcapacity. And they were even talking about, well, we can't take it from those school areas, because they have growth plans in them. Reno High, for example, they said there's areas, the Reno High should be zoned for that has growth in it, and so, we can't be, you know, messing with that too much. And I can understand, I can understand that it's something we should consider. I really do think it is something we should consider, and I think it'll be on the bigger projects. The smaller projects, adding one or two students here, I don't think it's going to make a big difference, but when you're talking regional projects, big projects, it's something we really should consider.
The commissioners, Commissioner Taylor? Any other comments on this item? Commissioner Wieski?
The problem I struggle with is that they say this is supposed to be built out by 2017. I'm like, okay, that's a reasonable amount of time for the school district to react, but that's a guess, that's an estimate. I don't know for sure whether that's enough time. And so, we're kind of, but we're trying to make educated decisions, and so, I feel like we're kind of somewhat at a loss.
Commissioner Taylor?
Commissioner Taylor, I thought that they said they were going to have a planning meeting, the school district did, in the next couple of months. Does anybody remember that, that we were going to, at our last meeting?
I don't remember that. I'll just, I'll just weigh in and say, yeah, they need to do that. I think that it's our, you know, to a certain extent, it's our responsibility to take this stuff into consideration, and whether it's sewer or water, you know, we can ask, you know, Bill about the sewer, and he's going to give us an answer. We have to ask the school district and take the answer that they give us, and we just have to hope that powers larger than ours address this question of the need for schools, so that we aren't put in a position where we're bound by statute to make findings based on, you know, whether services are there, and to have to make some hard decisions when it's something that's totally out of our control and puts us in a bad position.
Is it appropriate for us to ask them to give us a presentation on their, on their meeting or their results of it, or?
Oh, sure.
I don't know if you guys would be interested in that.
If we want to go there, others?
Commissioner Kaufman, I thought it was on the agenda last month, or supposed to be on this month, or?
On the school board agenda?
No, that they were going to make a presentation to us as far as schools, the capacity that they had, the capacity where they were. I thought that was part of, one of the discussions we had during, with the school board before.
School, the school district staff came forward and presented three months ago, I think it was. I don't know if you're referring to something in the future, or I'm not sure what you're looking for.
No, I'm, I thought they were going to come before us to, to basically tell us where the overcrowding was, where the undercrowding is, and kind of what their plans were to, if there was overcrowding. And, I mean, they have, you know, an example, the project out in Verdi, they knew that there's a project planned for that. That's in the master plan, is that correct?
West Meadows?
Yes.
No. It currently has zoning and master plan for development for 100 and something units.
Okay, yeah, 190 some.
They're requesting additional units.
And there's another project that's above that, that...
Above to the north?
Yes.
There's the Mortenson-Garson project.
Okay.
Which has a school site on the other side of the freeway, I believe.
So, I thought we were supposed to have, they were supposed to make some type of presentation for us, or some comment was made, that they made, that they were going to come and do a presentation for us, where, where that growth is, what they're doing, that type of thing.
I can...
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Wieski.
Thank you. Last that I recall, the school district was going to have a meeting at the school board meeting in August, which, that was scheduled for, towards the end of August, but as we all know, at the beginning of August, some managerial issues came up at the school district, which postponed that. They were then rescheduled, the meeting to discuss overcrowding and options with Pedro. This month in September, I don't know if that meeting has been scheduled or will be rescheduled, but it has a lot to do with some of the issues that took place in early August regarding school board and Pedro Martinez.
Well, they were, they were scheduled at that same meeting where there was quite a bit of public comment. They were rescheduled for the second meeting later in August, and they did, that item was heard by the school board, and the report back from staff was that there was very little direction or action taken on it, and they're looking for more background information from staff to the school board.
Okay. And then, Commissioner Kaufman, at that point, after the meeting and discussion was had by the school board, then we were going to get an update on what happened at that meeting and what the school board direction was. So, I guess we just kind of had a briefing on what took place or didn't take place with the school board meeting.
Right, and they will be going back to the school board. I think they wouldn't have much to report at this time. I think they're going to, they need, I think, at least one more meeting with their school board, and that'd probably be a more appropriate time to have them come back when they have a little bit more information.
Commissioner Olivas, do they have, I guess, maybe more of a summarized report? Because they've squealed pretty loudly about overcapacity on certain projects, and certainly, they have a motive not to talk about alternatives and undercapacity in those schools at this time. But that's, I think, something I'd be curious about, because that comes back to some of the availability, and the availability of the services to be able to even make the findings, is redistricting even a possibility. So, some of those, addressing some of those issues would be, I think, important to even let us determine whether it's even available, because they haven't said anything about any of the schools that are undercapacity, or have room, or there are other options.
Oh, they did mention it a couple meetings ago. They were discussing what schools still have capacity.
Yeah, but I guess in a broader picture, I'm getting at, they haven't, I mean, clearly there's elections coming up here and certain things getting voted on, and it's, I guess, probably not coincidental that they've showed up to the last three meetings and squealed about overcapacity. So, I would like to know kind of the bigger picture answer to that.
Can I just, I want to make a comment that, obviously, this is an issue that's playing out in a sort of higher-up venues than ours, and I would, would, I'm open to presentations, but I would sort of recommend that we leave those discussions for the school board, or for the council, or the county commission, although these are things that we do have to make deliberations on. I would argue that, you know, these arguments need to take place in another venue besides this.
I'd agree, but I think that that certainly goes to availability.
Commissioner Wieski, if that's the case, then maybe this is something that we shouldn't be part of our findings.
I think the findings are mandated in state law.
I would agree. I would agree. So, therefore, we need to be knowledgeable about what's going on and not just kind of sit back and let it, because, I mean, we want to make educated votes and recommendations.
Yeah, I think my only point was that I don't think they're going to let us sit back, and I think they'll come to us on each project with that information, and that there's larger discussions that we probably want to have happen at places like the school board.
But would the recommendations, would they only be coming to us saying we're overcapacity? And that's their statement?
It's going to depend on where the project is and what the project is.
Any other comments, discussion?
Yeah, Commissioner Reno, I look at this like, look, the school doesn't have money to grow or to build the schools it needs, the school district. I mean, they don't have the money to build the schools they need, and we, as a planning commission, are approving projects moving forward for more growth. And so, eventually, we're going to hit a wall here where both of us are going to get sucked into this, and like you said, at what point are we going to be stuck in a very bad position to have to start denying projects because there isn't capacity within the city of Reno, say, within the schools within the city of Reno? So, I mean, I think it's probably a good discussion to have now, or at least to start to become aware of it, but I agree that the school board will continue to educate us. I'm sure they will be in front of us telling us what the problems are, and the public for that matter. But I still think it's somewhat of our responsibility to know what's going on out there with the school district and with growth and capacity.
Commissioner Wieski, I don't disagree with you at all, Commissioner Reno. I think we need to think about it in a little broader spectrum. It encompasses water, it encompasses sewer.
Right.
It encompasses fire, police. It encompasses everything, and how do we get those answers? How do we get the answers that allow us to make the decisions on whether or not, in the future, the time between today and the build-out, will we, will each one of those entities have the ability to provide the services needed for that build-out? And if we ask the right questions and we're given honest answers, I, it helps me in my decision-making process to believe the answers that I'm hearing from the podium. And I believe by asking the right questions, then I'm fulfilling my duty as a planning commissioner in planning for the future and being able to make decisions in the future. If somebody asks a question and we don't get an answer, or an answer that says, by the time this is built out, we will have the capacity, we will have the availability to supply, then that's going to be a deciding answer for me, that somebody's not prepared to provide something in the near future. So, I believe that's our job as commissioners, to ask the right questions and understand the answers that we get.
Commissioner Wieski, I'd like to respond to that. I think those are excellent points, but my fear is that, you know, if we ask staff and say, I'm sorry, there's not enough build-out here, we are not going to have sewer capacity to be able to handle this new development, that I would, I would recommend denial. But is it right to recommend denial because there's not room in our schools? And I think that's the question, is if we can make all the findings but that, is that the way we need to be going? And I think that's kind of what this discussion is.
That, Commissioner Stibbe, that to me is the only clear part, that unfortunately, that's the finding we have to make, and it's in statute, and that we're asked to look at the availability of services to determine if we are responsibly allowing development, you know, where then the folks who are going to live there will be served by water, sewer schools, things like that. Those are all great points, and I thought Commissioner Wieski also summarized that very well. We could talk about this whole night. Would you guys like to continue, more comments?
Well, Commissioner Reno, I just would like to say, I look forward to the school district coming before us and explaining what their future plans are, because I think that will help give us direction and guidance into the future.
I will relay that message to them.
Thank you.
Commissioner Olivas, I agree. I think that there's, some of these are a little bit different. I mean, electrical service, they're for-profit, Nevada Energy, they're going to provide service, it's going to happen. Some of these are a little bit different. The schools are certainly a more difficult issue. Tomwa is even for-profit to some extent, and they will provide service. So, the schools are certainly a more difficult one, and there's other more difficult ones. I think police, fire, some of those will be in there too, because they can't react like a for-profit company would. So, I guess that becomes a more difficult question, certainly in those arenas.
This, this makes me think of a presentation we had at Regional by the Smarter Cities folks, where they took all the services and quantified costs of services in different areas of the city for different development projects, and it was really informative, and I'm just thinking, you know, I could go either way on the presentation from school district, especially considering the position that we're in, potentially. But if we're going to do that, you know, to have a discussion about, you know, sewer, water, streets, other things, and maybe that Smarter Cities presentation, maybe Regional, I don't know if others would be interested, but I thought that was a great presentation, and it really gave a big-picture sort of view of availability and costs of services compared to, you know, in relation to types of development, as well as geographical locations of development. So, food for thought. If we get a presentation on the school situation first and maybe go from there. Does anybody else have any other thoughts or comments?
Okay, well, then, let's move on to the next item, item number nine, staff announcements. Claudia?
The last couple city council meetings, we've had two meetings since you've last met. The Brookfield Zone Change passed a first reading, the second reading is scheduled for September 10th. West Meadows Estates Master Plan Amendment was passed by city council, so we will have a report on that back to you, I believe, in November, and then, we will bring back the PUD as well to this body. And then, you've been receiving emails regarding our extra meetings coming up due to our large increase of cases that we've been having, as well as some other projects that need to come before you. So, right now, our extra meetings, September 17th and October 15th. I think Michelle has asked for headcount on that, and then, recently, one for an October 9th meeting, which is a Thursday, and she's heard from most of you, but if you have not responded for any of those, if you could please respond to Michelle via email to let her know if you'll be able to attend those meetings. And that is all I have at this time.
I have one question on that. So, that's three extra meetings?
Yes.
That is, an additional meeting in September for Planning Commission for additional development projects? That's an additional, that's two meetings in October for regular Planning Commission staff. Am I correct?
September 17th will be your second meeting in September, and then, there's a potential of three meetings in October. So, our first meeting, which is the third, October 3rd.
Regular meeting?
And then, a second one on October 9th, and a third one on October 15th.
So, it's...
I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Olivas, you said the second meeting in September, but that's a workshop on the master plan, not a regular meeting, is that right?
We're going to have most likely two agendas there, but they will be related items, both regarding the master plan updates.
Okay, so that was my question. Second meeting in September is not for regular Planning Commission development projects, it's for master plan? Is that the one?
Correct, it's a workshop update.
Okay.
And potentially, an initiation of a master plan amendment.
And then, there's the regular meeting in October, and then, a second meeting because of the amount of development projects?
October 15th would be for the... October 15th would be for the increase of cases, yes. October 9th would be a potential follow-up on the September 17th meeting. So, we just have to see how September 17th goes before that's confirmed, but we do need a head count, just in case.
Thank you. Any other staff announcements?
No.
Next item on the agenda, commissioners' suggestions for future agenda items. Hearing none?
I just want to make sure. It was clear that the school district, that was, that's already on the future agenda item, to have them come present in front of us.
Do we agree that that's, you guys want it, but I'm not, I don't need it? So, that's a yes? Okay?
Yes, okay, so, I was going to wait until they have a little bit more information and direction?
Yeah, once they have some direction, yeah.
Okay, very good. Any other future agenda items? Next item on the agenda, last opportunity for public comment. Anyone in the audience like to make a public comment? Okay. Last item, adjournment. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Go move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we're adjourned, thank you.